Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, March 23rd, 2016 Public Session of the Halton District School Board. I'd like to welcome everybody and those in the audience. And I'd also like to recognize that Trustees Danielle Lee and Gray are on the phone, and we have regrets from Trustee Patten. So I'd like to remind everybody that we are being video voice recorded and telecast on the Internet, so wave to your friends. And please, if you have any items that will make noise, your cellphones or your computers or anything else, if you could please put them on silent or turn them off, it'd be appreciated. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda noting that the item 4.2.4 Elementary Class Size is actually an information item, so we'll be moved to the first item of information So a motion to approve with that change. Trustee Grabent, seconded by... Trustee Collard. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Trustee Gray, are you still there?
Can you do a lot of them?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. We are now up to declarations of any possible conflict of interest. Do we have any tonight? Seeing none, we have no delegations or presentations, so we will move on to the minutes of the regular board meeting from March 2nd, 2016. Could I have a motion to approve? Trustee Reynolds, seconded by Face Chair Graves. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you. So we're up to approval of business transacted in private session, and I know there's a couple items. Go ahead.
Yes, two items. The first is, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board accept the tender from KESAB General Contracting Company Limited in the amount of $1,818,814 as contained in tender number RFT 16-11 for Alton Village Public School in Burlington, Ontario, subject to final ministry approval to proceed. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve a budget of $2,271,364 for the construction of five additional classrooms at Alton Village Public School. This project is to be financed by Capital Priorities Funding as allocated by the Ministry of Education in November 2015 and subject to final ministry approval to proceed. And I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Grabent, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Trustee Gray? Well, she voted last time. She locked out. So that passes unanimously, thank you. And your next one?
Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board ratify the memorandum of settlement which was reached with the Elementary Teachers Federation of Ontario, Halton Designated Early Childhood Educators, on March 4th, 2016, subject to ratification by the union. And I so move.
Thank you. May I have a seconder? Trustee Collard, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Director Miller?
Yes, I just... Thank you, Chair Amos. I just want to make a comment. I was going to reserve this for my director's report, but I'm going to say it now because you've just ratified an agreement for public consumption. There are 72 boards of education in Ontario and 473 local deals. There are 240 local deals that have yet to be negotiated, an agreement reached, so they're still outstanding. That's about an average of four per board. I would want to... I would like to acknowledge the great work of our staff, including the environment that the trustees and senior admin have created for negotiations and our union partners and in particular negotiating teams in helping us be one of the few, if not the only, board who has reached all our local agreements. So I think it's an important acknowledgement, and I want to praise all those involved for it and hope the public press is taking note. Thank you.
I think we'd like to all echo our thanks to all the parties involved, because I think what we have achieved is significant, and the fact that we have ratified all of our union deals, we need to give big thanks to everyone who is involved. Was there any other items from private session?
No, that's a bit...
Thank you very much. Our next item is the order paper. Do we have any questions or comments on the order paper tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to... Oh, we have no action items tonight, so we're moving up to our student trustee reports. Trustee Schneider and Sahai.
Good evening, everyone. So a lot... or two seasons ago, we had our Senate meeting at MM Robinson, and it was really just planning for our upcoming conference, which is the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. So the elementaries and secondaries were busy planning their workshops, and secondaries are planning panels this year instead of workshops. So the panels will feature certain things to do with transitioning to post-secondary. But the target for our post-secondary attendance is for not grade 12 students, but actually grades 9s to 11 students, because we found that is the majority of attendance in the past years, and targeting, ensuring success for them is seems like a priority for the students they have outlined. So it's focusing more on what to do to prepare yourself for getting... applying to university and what university life is like, different panels on stuff like that. First, elementary, it's about going from elementary to secondary, and they're busy planning those. And we're also busy planning or working with Sheridan College on booking that space like we've done in the past, and it looks like it will happen. Other than that, every... Oh, the second... we're trying for the second week of May. If you guys want to come, you can talk to Jovan or I closer to the date, and we'll give you the further details. Do you have anything to add?
I got three dates reserved from Sheridan. I've got April 28th, May 5th, but we're probably not going to do that because Sophie's not here, or May 12th. So I'm just... we're just waiting. We're going to go back to Senate, ask them which date works for them, and then we'll book it. Also, me and Sophie are retiring soon from our position, and so I'd like to thank Director Miller for sending out the letter for student trustee nomination and elections. So I know at our school, we have... I've sent out the form, we're looking for nominees, and we're hopefully going to get our nominee by Friday. All high schools have to get their nominees to here at the board office by Friday, so hopefully we get all those. Otherwise, I would ask trustees and superintendents to please politely remind principals to make sure to get nominees for this wonderful, wonderful position.
Yeah, that's like one day.
That's one day.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions for our student trustees tonight? Seeing none, I have... Do you want to send us a little bit of reminder about the nomination process? And I mean, so that maybe we can all send something out to our schools tomorrow, so as a reminder, but... That'd be great, thank you. And just so you know, you're both too young to retire. But we'll miss you when you're gone. Okay, our next items is, do we have any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we're now up to our action items for April 6th, and our first item is the employment equity policy. Director Miller, report 16047 on page 10 of your board package. Director Miller?
Thank you, Chair Amos. I'm going to refer to Executive Officer McFadden.
Thank you. I introduced this report at the last board meeting, and it is a legislated requirement due to some additional grounds being added, protected grounds under the Ontario Human Rights Code. So those are listed before you, and it is here for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding this item, which is coming back on April 6th? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you. My questions aren't against the idea of it. My problem is some technical issues with the... The appendix is the administrative policy procedure. It's actually a policy. Okay, I did not... Anyway, all right, fine. And then the other question is whether or not the report should probably have sent a highlighted copy of what we've added, because I mean, you're right, it's just an addition of things. So when we do these, you know, up-down, we're just adding them because we have to. I'm not exactly sure why we couldn't just have a changed one. Again, I worked with the one I had on paper. I didn't work with the one that we had sent, which means I'm not sure which one people would have pulled off. But we also don't have a history of the revision, so when I was looking at, again, I'm looking at the wrong piece of paper, but I'm pulling up the one that's on the board policy right now, it doesn't have an effective date, and yet I know we had it in effect. So we're missing some pieces to tie all the loose ends together, because it's not a question... Like I said, the new list of the ones that are in there make perfect sense. So it's just a question of saying, you know, if you were looking at the one on the board package, not having to do the work of literally what I just did, which was, you know, ding, 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 which ones have you got, which ones have we changed? And it's a blanket comment, not just on this thing, but when we update something to actually make it very clear, we've just changed, you know, one to two and three to four, and so somebody can go, "Yep, yep, no problem." And then we could probably have waved and say, "Yes, let's get it into place now." So...
Just a comment. I apologize for that. You're quite right, this wasn't before you last time. Gail has corrected me. I have... I presented this to the senior team, and I guess I'm becoming confused. This... There were eight protected grounds under the Human Rights Code previously. There are now 14. I'd be happy to tell you verbally which are the new ones. Ancestry, citizenship, color, ethnic origin, place of origin, and record of offenses have been added as protected grounds under the Ontario Human Rights Code. So these are simply a reflection of that addition, which happened this January of 2016, and this would become effective immediately were the board to approve it.
Director Miller?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. You make a good point, and we can do that, and we will do that from here on in.
So can we then have the one that comes back in the final... the package, I presume we're going to do in April, to have the stuff at the top right-hand corner that will then tell us, because we did switch the procedure to the policy at a certain date, and that we revised it twice or three times since then, because we would have had a policy, and this is a revision, and we just revised due to increased whatever it was, the list of, for government reasons, because that way we'll know that it did get reviewed when we said it was going to be reviewed.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. Through the chair, to Executive Officer McFadden. My question was, just one, when I was glancing down, I noticed that the standards, the integrated accessibility standards are regulation from 2011, and my question was, does that reflect the AODA standards that were updated January 15? And so just looking at it, I wouldn't know that, but is that something that you would update?
I will check to see if the... Pardon me, if the regulation has the updated standards from 2015, or whether or not that regulation number changed. I will check that for the revision that comes back.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. My question is similar to the one I believe I asked last time on this item, and could you explain the prohibited ground related to record of offenses? I just... I don't understand that one, especially as it relates to the business of a school board and working with children.
Certainly. Record of offenses means an individual's criminal record history, and there are only some instances where you are allowed to, I'll use the term discriminate, in your hiring based on someone's record of offenses. And in the Education Act Regulation, I believe it's 11120 of the Education Act, allows us to collect that information from all of our applicants, and in 2012 required us to collect it from all of our current employees, and now all new applicants must provide a record of offenses, and we are allowed to not hire people based on their criminal conviction history. And that would include a vulnerable sector search for people who are working with vulnerable individuals, and we are a designated employer who is allowed to look at the Ontario list of pardoned sex offenders. That is what a vulnerable sector search entails. So all new applicants must provide that to us, and we are able to make our hiring decision based on that information. So record of offenses is only able to be used for hiring purposes only, not for any other purpose, under the Human Rights Code, and various offenses are able to be used by various different types of employers. And we have the most deep... the ability to search the deepest records in Ontario as an employer who works with vulnerable people. Does that answer?
Thank you. Trustee Collard?
I'm wondering if maybe our policy should state something to the effect that there are some records of offenses that would prevent us from hiring someone, because the way that looks in the policy, it looks like the door is wide open, and I don't think we want it to look wide open.
Through the chair, this employment equity policy, we've simply repeated the protected grounds right from the Act, but we do have a separate administrative procedure on hiring, which talks about the record of offenses in more detail.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this topic tonight? Reminding you I'll be coming back in a couple weeks. Seeing none, we will move to... Oh, oh, sorry. You snuck in. Trustee L Harrison?
Thank you. I'm sneaky-doubt-bye. So my question was just kind of on the same topic, and does it make sense to reference that admin procedure here or not, the one about record of offenses, just so people know there's that other piece out there somewhere?
Do you want to respond? Hear it? So can you say it so everybody...
It will be, yes.
It will be. Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the next action item for April 6th, which is Community-Based Facility Enhancements Policy Report, 16051 on page 12 of your board package. Trustees Reynolds, Collard, and Graves. Trustee Reynolds?
Okay, thank you. I'd first like to just express my gratitude to the subcommittee members, my trustee colleagues Grabent, Harvey Hope, Graves, as well as Superintendent Cullen for their work on this particular motion. It has been brought forward to Bylaw Governance Committee, Committee of the Whole, and so we've had a rather good crack at it. We present it tonight collectively, and I invite my subcommittee members here if there is anything you'd like to add or answer. If there are any questions, feel free to pipe in. For the most part, this new policy, the purpose is really how to enhance the facility. We have essentially separated out the fundraising element, because we felt as a framework policy, we wanted public and certainly through the director to staff be able to evaluate quite quickly facility enhancements on their own merits. Certainly, the climate has been one in which we've had a number of facility enhancements come to board. We've had auditorium renewals, and we have currently the Nelson renovation. So this is certainly timely. the value that I think is important for the public to be aware of is certainly captured in our policy statement, in which we're, I want to say, changing the culture of how we do business, in the words, "The board will actively seek projects." And I think that one of this, our committee's discussions weighed heavily on our multi-year plan focus of ingenuity and innovation, and really, we were hoping to encourage more projects, and hopefully this can do that. So certainly, I would hope to get the support for this motion going forward and getting the public's input, and I welcome any questions or concerns that you have.
Thank you. Questions and comments regarding this item? Trustee Collard?
Since we are looking at posting this on the website, I thought we might want to waive the rules and get it on the website immediately, instead of waiting for two weeks in order to do so. So I would like to make a motion to waive the rules.
So there's a motion on the table to waive the rules. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Trustee L Harrison, are you in? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that the April 6th to the May 6th was really tight on the 25 days, so I was going to suggest this anyway, and in some cases, I mean, the policy doesn't need any... I think one missing backslash between and and or, but other than that, there's no polishing that needs to be done before it gets posted, so that's why we suggest we get it up and running. People might actually have time on Easter Monday, I don't know, read it.
Thank you. So we have a motion to waive the rules. Yep. All those in favor of waiving the rules to discuss this, to vote on this tonight? And that passes unanimously, so I will put the motion on the floor. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board's Community-Based Facility Enhancement Policy is appended to Report 16051, be posted on the board's website for a public input for a period not less than 25 days, and any input returned to the board for consideration at the first board meeting in May 2016. Moved by... Trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Collard. Any discussion? Trustee L Harrison?
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you to everyone for pulling this together. My understanding is that we are trying to send a signal that we are committed and proactive partners, that we're going to be seeking those types of partnerships going forward that do meet the essence of the policy. So that's great. And on that note, I was just wondering what examples the committee anticipated or talked about, because I'm not sure that I completely understand what could come through this policy.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through trustee L Harrison, thank you for your question. So I think for the most part, facility, we have defined it. It is any site, building, and amenity at a school. So certainly, it may not be a school. We've had auditorium renewals. We've had requests for baseball diamonds and arenas. So it's... it would be... it would be anything that is attached to the school board property. And we really didn't use... We were sort of, through our philosophical, you know, discussions, we were not focusing on just one. We wanted to make it very interpretive, so that we were open to... Because we don't know what the future will bring. We don't know what changes will be needed or requested from communities.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this item tonight? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. So our next... Now we're up to our information items, and the first information item is Elementary Class Size. Associate Director Bogue, report 16055 in your board package on page 13... Sorry, 15. Associate Director Bogue?
Thank you, Chair Amos. Trustees, this report is here to really highlight a couple of challenging situations that we're working through right now in the staffing process for next year. Tom Thompson and Martin Street are both dual-track schools that have very small English-language tracks within each building, particularly in the primary grades, and it's causing challenges in building reasonable class sizes for the kids in the English track. So it's really here to highlight the issue. One of the options potentially to create class sizes that are more typical of other class sizes across the system would be to triple grade. We recognize if that is a recommendation, that would have to come back to the board for approval. And I'm really happy to answer any questions that trustees may have. I may look to Executive Officer McFadden if they're around the staffing process, or Superintendent Newton if it's a specific question around Martin Street. We've consulted with Superintendent Blackwell as well for Tom Thompson, and I've got some of her information as well if it's a Tom Thompson-specific question. So happy to answer any questions that trustees might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Associate Director Bogue on this? Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of comments and a couple of questions, so I will certainly go back on the list if I run out of my time. So thank you for this report. I think it's really important that trustees and the public be aware of the state of the nation here at the Board. It certainly highlights the importance of our program viability results. This is a situation that is coming up this September, so I'm glad that we're having this opportunity to discuss this. And certainly gives, you know, consideration to the decisions that are coming up towards us in the near future. So a couple of things that I'm concerned about is, so we understand that there's a potential that, certainly with the Tom Thompson and Martin Street consideration, that in order to accommodate these students, we might have some financial implications of perhaps hiring additional staffing. But what I'd like to know is, outside of the financial implication, what other negative concerns are there when you're dealing with the small class structures?
So is the question, if we don't triple grade and we keep only split-grade classes and keep classes smaller, are there some negatives associated with that? Thank you for that question. At first glance, one might think that small classes are a good thing. And in general, I would say that is a reasonable thought. In these particular contexts, when we've got these very small cohorts, in fact, one of the options would have a class at Martin Street at six students. I think when we think long-term, we've got a cohort of kids that will travel together throughout their elementary school career and be very much with that same group of kids. And it's a very small group, so they've got limited opportunities for interaction with other students. In an ideal situation, you've got a couple of classes within a grade so that kids can mix in between classes as well. So it does limit that social piece for sure. And you've got kids that are co-horted together over a long period of time.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you, Chair, to Associate Director. I too echo trustee Reynolds' comments. And I have a lot of questions and concerns about the situation that these two schools find themselves in. And my questions really go back to, if we could backtrack, to how, when, and maybe why the decisions were made to select these particular schools to become dual-track schools. I'm asking this because the scenario seems to be playing out similarly as it did in Pineland, which was a school that became dual-track school and is now morphing into a single-track French immersion school. So I think, you know, we need to be very cognizant that we cannot, we have to be very mindful in how we plan program delivery and how we decide to designate schools. And this truly highlights the importance of the work of the Program Viability Committee, the importance of managed program delivery, and in its absence, the resultant negative outcomes. And secondly, I would like to understand, from the teachers and pedagogical perspective, which scenario would make most sense when it comes to triple grading? So we're looking at a difference of combining grades 1, 2, 3, or 4, 5, 6. Where's the greatest gap? And I'm thinking about the teachers and their ability to teach effectively and about student success. So I think, you know, before we're asked to select the organization for the classrooms, we need to understand what is the best for student success. And finally, I guess, I'm wondering, will there be additional teacher supports made available for those who are now asked to manage a classroom of three different grades with the different spectrums of, you know, learning and where the students are at? Thank you.
Thanks, trustee Oliver. Maybe I can try to encapsulate all three. I think there were three questions in there. First off, these two school examples are really good examples of why we're doing the Program Viability Committee. There's no doubt, we've got 22 dual-track schools, and I think there's 13, 14 of them that have very small numbers of students that entered the grade-one cohort, numbers under 15. So, you know, these numbers are even smaller than that. So we've got some other schools that might find themselves in this predicament a year or two down the line as well. So that's the work of the Program Viability Committee is to try to solve this issue. In terms of preferences at the school sites, we have consulted with principals, and I know Superintendent Newton may want to jump in here, but the principals have looked at the makeup of the kids within those classes. And in both schools, the principal preference after consulting with teachers and looking at individual kids would be not to triple grade for a variety of reasons, but needs of kids. There's a number of students that have some significant learning needs. And then just managing three different grade levels within a class obviously poses some challenges for teachers for sure. In terms of where to land, right now, this is really here for trustees to have a look at. This is what we're currently dealing with. We haven't looked at in detail what would be better, a grade 1, 2, 3 versus a grade 4, 5, 6, triple grade at Tom Thompson. If the recommendation is that we will triple grade, then we would come back with another report to trustees to say, "This is our recommendation," and give you all that detailed data as well from a school perspective on terms of which one and why.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. My questions and comments are going to focus on Martin Street Public School. Martin Street Public School, as you know, is undergoing renovations. So they're in a unique position in that they're currently being housed at Boyne Public School. So when I look at the organization, you know, I struggle a little bit because they are at a school that does have healthy and robust class sizes in the same physical building. So I guess I have a question first, and then I'll follow it up with some comments. But could I just have an overview of the class sizes at Boyne in grades 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5?
I haven't got that data with me. I'm looking over to see if Superintendent Newton may have that. I know we had that conversation.
Yes, thank you. And through the Chair, to trustee Graves. The class sizes at Boyne in grade 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 are at what we would already staff them at. So they are at the max that we would allow at those stages for all those grades.
So how many students in a class?
21. So currently, right now, on this configuration, there would be three classes in grade 1 at 20. And that's a cap. There are four classes in grade 2 with an average class size of 20. There are three classes in grade 3 with 20. And so that's what we're looking at, grade 1, 2, and 3, how it would affect Martin Street. And the houses are closing every day as they're encroaching upon Boyne. So we anticipate that those numbers will be growing before September.
So I think my comment is, this is what I'm struggling with, is that they're in the same physical building as these larger class sizes. And I know that the averages were given, but I'm sure some will be over, of course, what the averages are. So I'm struggling with both of these organizations. So given that they're on a premises that will need portables next year, how do we justify a class of six students when we've got groups of students who will be in portables? And then, on the other side, with Organization 2, how do we defend or how do we justify the pedagogical sort of ramifications of a 1, 2, 3 split when those students, you know, there are other students of that age in the building? And I know that when Martin Street moved to Boyne, it was very clear that they would be two separate schools operating within the same physical building. That is very clear. I'm just wondering, given the exceptional nature of this, you know, I'm sure it was discussed. I think from my perspective, I would like to see a report of, you know, what are the possibilities? How could that be done? They're all on the same site. So what sort of common sense measurements can be put in place? And if in the end, it can't be done for whatever reason, I think, you know, as someone who will have to defend this decision to constituents in my area, who are wondering why there are portables on site and a triple grade or a class of six students, I think I just, I need to be able to back up whatever decision is made in this case. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos, to Vice Chair Graves. I'll jump in a little bit. We've been on this one. You make a very, a very good point. The challenge becomes, it's by coincidence that Martin Street is in Boyne now. Those students will return to Martin Street. And you can certainly make an argument that they are better making the connections with the students that they will return to Martin Street with than the students they leave behind at Boyne when they return to Martin Street. Added to that, this is not the first time that we've had to deal with this with Martin Street. And I suspect that next year, we will have a similar scenario, maybe not exactly the same that would entail triple grading, but the projections of the English numbers in Martin Street are not projected to be huge at any time soon. So as much as I understand that as a possible solution, it is clear, I believe it clearly to be a Band-Aid solution for one year that we can maybe sell to the parents, but may, in the long term, have an impact on those students from Martin Street who are mixed in with the Boyne when they are taken out of Boyne and go back to Martin Street, that they may not have had those social connections with the kids that they're going back to Martin Street with. So it's an excellent point, and, you know, it's kind of a, between a rock and a hard place kind of choice, but certainly around a report and some more work I think we can do. I'm just giving a perspective on it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is trustee Harvey Hope.
My original question was, after hearing all this? I think part of the interesting discussion that we just had about whether or not you take two children in grade 2 and allow them to be part of a bigger group, or whether they end up, you know, if we don't triple grade, what do we do? What's the next nearest school? Like in the Pineland situation, it was Mohawk Gardens, and it's not very far away, and, you know, I'm looking up the map, you know, where's the nearest school? And then you don't want to preempt what may be the boundary review for the new revised Martin Street. So all of those things coming into play. I appreciate getting the information in advance. One of the things that I wanted to ask about was the history of the numbers floating back up. I have a school that, in one of my areas that is dual-track, that has been on, teetering on the edge of, you know, becoming an issue, made the Program Viability Report as far as a list of particular schools. And yet, next year with the Core French, it has a healthy grade-one enrollment for the first time in a few years. And also, last year started the year teetering and ended by January healthy because of people moving in. So I'm wondering, I'm not familiar with these two areas, although Martin Street being in Milton says something. But Tom Thompson being in Burlington, I don't know the area as well. Is that an area where you might have people moving in? Isn't it an area where people switch and demit from French immersion in that they come in and they try French immersion, and then they leave after grade 1? So I'm wondering the history of the school, because it's a very different situation when you're talking about neighborhoods that are turning over, neighborhoods that have a lot of kids that come in and say, "Oh, I better try this grade-one French immersion because I don't know if I'm going to like it or not." And so they go in with different reasons for taking it, and the Core French might solve that issue. So I'm wondering, are those kinds of pieces, if there's any background you can help?
Yeah, I think in a nutshell, trustee Ann Harvey Hope, I'll look over towards Superintendent Newton. Both of these schools are in established areas. The uptake in the FI program has been on the increase, and there's not a lot of in and out. So it's a pretty stable, the clientele there are pretty stable in those programs.
They have Core French, Primary? And the reason why I say that, I was absolutely surprised at the reaction in my neighborhood. We've established this is going to be year 6, year 7 next year? Of the possibility of the effect of Primary Core French could have on that up?
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. Tom Thompson will have Core French beginning next year. They haven't had it till now, but I'm unsure about the year 6, year 7.
What I'm saying is that James W. Hill has been a potential problem for years.
Oh, I see.
They have small English classes, and all of a sudden, you know, we've been waiting for the Core French to arrive. It has arrived, and I am amazed at the reaction of the community in that the French immersion uptake still hasn't changed. It's just we have a bigger grade 1.
So through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope. For sure, that's a development. As Associate Director Bogue presented in February, there is, I think, February or January, whenever, there is, we've seen no discernible difference in French immersion uptake by and large around the Board as a result of Core French. And those areas where we have seen it, it's hard with just a two-year sample to say that that is the reason. I would say that's, it's encouraging at James W. Hill. I would agree. I'd be reluctant to say that that's exactly the reason, though.
Thank you. Trustee Gribens.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Okay, I'm going to put on my parent hat a bit here. My kids do go to a, it's actually a triple-track school. And what I find interesting when I talk to them is that the kids do not mix between the streams. They're very, very siloed. And I think that perhaps we need to look innovatively. French immersion kids are in French 50% of their day. So can we not include the English stream, siloed kids, and arrange their day so that half their day, they're with the French immersion kids taking their English subjects? And so then they can still maintain their, you know, Martin Street or Tom Thompson, whatever, especially at Martin Street, their feeling of being part of that school community, but still have the socialization and the big pluses that come with larger class sizes.
That's a great question. I want, I'm going to look to one of my... Do you want to jump in?
I'll jump in. Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Gribens. I was going to do what Associate Director Boggs is going to do, either look at Superintendent Etoff or Solmini. But I would say James W. Hill did do that, and it worked. I'm not sure if they're still doing it or still able to do it, but they were doing that. But I know it was pretty complicated to do, so I'm looking at, so...
Yeah, through the Chair, to trustee Gribens. I think across the Board, we've tried this in different ways. One example over the years has actually been at WI Dick Middle School. And I don't believe they still do it anymore. I'm not sure. But there was a time when they actually formally timetabled the classes to do exactly what you say. During the English times, two halves came together, and during the French times, they split apart and two French came together. It was, they were able to do that in that situation because it was a middle school environment with kind of pure... it was a middle school environment with kind of period by period. Um, it's much more difficult over kind of a K to eight structure to do versus a middle school structure of, of six to eight. And that's, that's primarily why it's, it's, it's not done and broadly across the board, I would assume. Um, informally, um, as Director Miller was stating, um, I'd say there are a number of schools and, you know, in situations, um, uh, where they can, where they have, have the ability for, for portions of the day for maybe a subject or two, they are, um, you know, integrating, you know, especially when you have some of those challenging splits, you know, where you only maybe have, you know, five or six students of a grade, you know, for geography or science, uh, at the elementary grades, they may join the other full grade four class, um, you know, for some of those subject areas where it's appropriate. But, um, so that's, that's been my experience as an elementary principal.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Schneider would also like to speak to this.
I, I actually went through that exact system at my elementary school, which was in our co-terminist board, but it was the same system where I was in the English track, but we had French track at our school. And, um, we took all of our English classes with our, um, French immersion counterparts. Um, and personally through that experience, we experienced all the benefits that you listed. Um, and I, I had a much better learning experience because that, because there was that divide, um, since grade five when they had first come. And that was kind of, um, but we only did that in grades seven and eight. So we didn't do that up until grade seven and eight because of the, um, the K to eight structure. But in our school in seven and eight, we made it more of a period kind of structure and that's why it worked. But, um, we found it beneficial there.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Collard.
Here we go again. Um, I, all I can say is that, um, I've never been supportive of the triple grading and I never will be, but I'm also not supportive of teeny tiny classes. And in particular with respect to Martin Street, if we can find a way to integrate those English students with other students that are, uh, attending Boeing for the period of time that they are at Boeing, yes, they, they will perhaps not form as many friendships with Martin Street students, but there aren't many Martin Street students for them to form friendships with. So, um, I don't think that that is a detriment. I think that is a benefit to try and integrate them if we possibly can for, for that period of time that they're there. Um, and then hopefully between what happens with the PVC, the renovations and the potential boundary change for Martin Street, we'll have a more robust English program to offer them when they return to Martin Street. That would be the, the best possible s- um, outcome for this for Martin Street. Uh, Tom Thompson is in a very precarious position as well, because I know that they're overpopulated to the point where they actually, I think will probably outgrow even the capacity for portables next year. So I don't know how we fix that one. But, uh, for Martin Street, I would like to see any possibility for integration. Um, it's, it's just, I, I feel for these kids. It's not right for them to be in such small classes and to have so little opportunity for social interaction and for hearing what other children think and are learning in an age when we're becoming so much more inquiry-based. When your class is that small, how much inquiry do you get?
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, my question is, so notwithstanding what my thoughts are on the triple grades or the sizes and so on, when, at what point do we engage the families of these students? Because, you know, there may be instances where families want their three or five or six children because of their needs to be in a smaller classroom. I, I can't assume, um, what their learning needs are. Uh, so I just wonder, although instinctively, I have to say I agree with what everybody else has said. Um, at what point do we engage the families in a conversation about what's right for these particular students?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question in terms of the, the family wishes. I, I think the danger in that however might be that you might get half the group that says, I really like the small class and the other half that says, you know, a bigger class might be a better, a better, um, option. And then it's almost like you've got winners and losers. So I'm, I'm not, I, I want to give that a little bit more thought, I think, in terms of what that might look like, because, you know, they may all want the same thing as well.
So is there, I'm sorry, can I just keep going for a second?
You can follow up.
Yes, that's what I would like to do. Thank, thank you. Exactly. Um, so is there any mechanism by which they can be made aware of this report coming to the board? Just so there's no blind siding, I guess? Like, I don't even have a sense that people know this is under consideration. So whether we actively ask them or not, it would be great if they had the opportunity to know this is here and make a delegation if they felt so, um, that it was, that's what they desired.
We can certainly make sure that they're aware of the report.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, good. I'm terribly sorry. It takes a while to get off mute. Um, I just wanted to echo, uh, Trustee L. Harrison's. And, uh, and I appreciate that at the end, Superintendent Boggs, you said that you would go and speak to the parents, be, because when you said that you were leery to, because you didn't know what result you would get. That, that's the kind of thing that concerns me. So given that it's such a very small number of parents, I think it would be very easy to go to them and say, this is the situation we, we're in. We're trying to make a decision. What advice would you give us? Making, and not putting the decision in their hands, but at least finding out how they feel as opposed to the small class versus being with the Boeing students. And I have to agree with, um, uh, Trustee Collard in that it really would be, uh, given that those students are going back in September 2017, this school, it would be a one year that they would be put in with the Boeing students. So I do think that is something that, that I think should be explored as well. So that was just my two cents.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. Um, so I also echo those comments from, uh, Trustee Daniele and Trustee L. Harrison. I, I certainly would hope that, um, uh, given that, uh, this, these two schools are, um, you know, we, we need to sort of serve them next year while we're making the decision. We don't want to put them in, um, on hiatus. We want to give them, their students, their children, um, uh, a wonderful year. And I would, I would hope that we could, uh, engage them in a conversation as to how this would affect them, particularly with Tom Thompson, um, having, um, the population and the high number of portables. I, I think that the parents would really want to be aware of, um, whether there is, uh, uh, room for them, um, because I know the school is at excess population, um, and what that would look like, uh, and how that could affect the needs of their students. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, we, we don't want to leave these students , uh, waiting for, you know, the changes. They'll be waiting another year. So I think we, we need to make some, some concessions for this year, um, and, uh, and help, um, engage them in this, in this decision.
Director Miller.
Um, thank, thank you, Trustee Reynolds. Through you Chair Amos to trustees. Uh, I'm, I, I wouldn't say I'm concerned, but I'm a little anxious about engaging the families, notwithstanding the comments you've made, because ultimately the decision will come back to the board. And if we engage this, if, if we discuss with these families, um, and we, we put in a report that, or we answer questions, three families prefer triple grading and three families prefer the smaller classes, there's a, a, and a, we may find ourselves in a position where we're identifying the students and the families in a public domain. Um, so I, I, I think we have to think, think about that. I, I certainly understand the, the sentiment that you're expressing, and I think we all do, but we also have to, um, deal with this a little gingerly because it, it is sensitive and, and we may find ourselves identifying individuals, um, around their choices around these kinds of things. So.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Two thoughts. One was to, to follow up on the, uh, on the English-French, um, combined class idea. Um, having been a parent of a child that was in that situation at James W. Hill, um, I watched how it played out. Uh, in that case, it was also a sort of year two of, okay, can we mix them up? They've had a couple of years together. Can we mix them up? Which is different than saying off the bat, you have a grade one class, they don't know each other anyway, um, you know, that kind of situation. So it depends on the situation. It can be done. It, um, requires personnel. So in this case, we are looking at, if we look at not triple tracking, uh, triple grading a class, we're already saying we're going to pay for the extra teacher. Therefore, you've got some flexibility, um, to do some innovative things so that, yes, you've got the extra personnel because you decided you weren't going to put this many kids in with one teacher. You've decided you're going to have two. Therefore, you've got some maneuverability. Um, it can, it, it's, it's a scheduling nightmare, um, but it can be done. And, um, not all schools that are JKDF eight schools, um, run in blocks, lots, some of them because of the dual-track nature and because of the 50/50, because they switch classrooms halfway through the day and everything else. A lot of them still use the period structure, so they can actually maneuver it, but it requires, um, uh, a lot of work. Um, but the kids like it. So they like interacting with other children, especially since we still have lunchrooms, which they're still having lunch with their own classmates. The other comment about what Director Miller just said, um, I would suggest that if we go and ask the parents or the parents are talked to, that the results are not reported in a way that it would just be, well, yes, we talked to them. Based on those discussions, this is our suggestion, not, you know, the statistics of what they said, not the whatever, just broad strokes on, on, you know, yes, we've, yes, we've consulted and we took it into consideration and here's our, our answer to address those concerns that they have. Because I remember Superintendent Etoff, I recall, said, did, and said something along those lines. Um, one of the things that we also need to remember is that it wasn't that long ago that we had one-room classrooms, one-room schoolhouses that taught more than one grade in a class. Um, so it really does depend on the teacher and, um, you know, what the makeup of the children is, is, and where they're at and how many there are and how long it's going to last. So we just have to keep all that in mind in that what's best for the children is the people that know them the best on the ground and waiting to hear what the, um, the answers are coming from the staff, taking into account that we can't throw five teachers at 10 kids. But other than that, there are some parameters, but.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Um, further to, um, Director Miller's comments about his concerns regarding cons- consulting with the families, um, I do think it's important for, at, at the very least, for the families to be made aware. Um, that's not the same as consulting, but, um, I think if they're at least made aware of the possibility of either, um, triple grading or very small classes, that they will give feedback. And, and that is in, in a, a way of a consultation. But without at least making them aware of the situation, then we really run the risk of, of lacking transparency. Yes, we're having this conversation in a public forum. Yes, it's webcast. That's not the same as being transparent. And I think we absolutely need to be transparent on this.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, not a lot else to say because Trustee Harvey Hope and Trustee Collard really summed up what they said regarding, uh, Director Miller's comments. I certainly understand the concern for inadvertently identifying these children, but I do think that there is a way to do it, to, uh, speak to the parents and get their opinions back and forth. And I, and I know that your concern is that they, they would come and they would delegate and things like that. But I can tell you, one way or the, whether we ask them or not, I'm going to be getting those phone calls. So I'd really like to be able to say that, well, we talked to you. This is some of the data that we found out and try to do that in a, a sensitive way as possible. But I do think it's extremely important that we be open and transparent on this and let them know what's happening and, and get some feedback on it.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Through you Chair Amos to trustees. Thanks for those comments. Uh, yeah, we'll figure out a way to do it. I, I appreciate what you're saying and I, I, I know you appreciate my anxiety around it. It's got nothing to do with not being transparent. It was more of a concern about, um, the, the possibility of identifying those kids. But, uh, I, I appreciate what you're saying. I think we will figure out a way to do it and we will, we will do, um, we will do it, I guess is the best way to describe it. So.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Graves.
I just wanted to echo the, the concerns of the, the last, uh, three speakers and, and err on the side of transparency in terms of consultation. And I, I, I do appreciate that, you know, when you're talking about a, a grade two class at Martin Street of two students, uh, any feedback they, they give that identifies them by grade essentially identifies the child. Uh, so I was, I was going to suggest that, um, well, maybe it's a question. Are, are we able to receive the feedback in, in private and, and not have the statistics come in, in public? Is that a mechanism that, that we're able to use? But it, it sounds like it's, it's going to be, uh, worked out anyway. So I can just withdraw my. There's no point of my talking.
Thank you. Usually if the class sizes are that small, people can figure them out. So that's why it does become a private matter because the numbers are small.
Yeah, I guess my question is, could, could that feedback not come in private session? Because i- isn't that the mechanism that we use? That if it's going to identify, uh, a, a child or, uh, specific needs of a child, that, that's what, uh, private session is, is for?
That's correct.
Why don't we take this away and, and just figure out how we would consult and then maybe we can figure out how, how to get the opinions on the table without numbers and, and identity, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this information item tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much, Associate Director Bow. Um, our next item is Adult and Continuing Ed Hybrid Implementation, Associate Director Boge, and I believe, um, Principal Tara Connor. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you Chair Amos. And it's my pleasure to introduce you to Tara Connor. Tara is, uh, Principal of Gary Allen High School, our ConEd, um, adult and alternative high school. We're here to, um, provide an update on some collaborative work between Gary Allen High School and the Center for Skills Development and Training. We've had a longstanding relationship and a long, um, history of collaborating and working with the center, but this work has really taken on a much more formal, um, uh, tone, I guess, over the last couple of years or so. And Tara has led this work and Kathy Mills from the center worked, uh, uh, with Tara on this work as well. So I'm going to turn things over to Principal Connor and she's going to take you through, uh, some of the more recent developments.
Wonderful. Thank you, David. Uh, good evening trustees and members of the senior board team. Thank you for the opportunity to report on the progress of our Adult and Continuing Education Review and the implementation of the Adult and Continuing Education Hybrid Model. As we're aware, the Halton District School Board delivers adult and continuing education programs and services through Gary Allen High School and includes a partnership with the Center for Skills Development and Training, which was officially incorporated as a not-for-profit affiliate of the Halton District School Board in 1998. Together, these programs and services bridge the gap for learners between high- the Centre for Skills Development and Training, which was officially incorporated as a not-for-profit affiliate of the Halton District School Board in 1998. Together, these programmes and services bridge the gap for learners between high school and their next steps, continued education, training and employment. In the fall of 2013, the Halton District School Board and the centre initiated the Adult and Continuing Education Review with the intended purpose to confirm and clarify the Halton District School Board Adult and Continuing Education Business Model and set direction for continued future success. This review was facilitated by Andy Potter of Deloitte, the same consultant who led a provincial adult and continuing education review for the Ministry of Education in 2011. As subsequent years, these activities have evolved to include the design and development of a plan for the implementation of the Adult and Continuing Education Hybrid Model and the continued action to better support the needs of adult learners across the region of Halton. Gary Allen High School offers adult and alternative continuing education programming within the region, and the centre offers immigrant language and settlement services, non-credit academic upgrading and employment services, and in partnership with Gary Allen High School offers pre-apprenticeship training. Together, Gary Allen High School and the centre provide a wide range of programming, programmes and services to over 25,000 individuals annually, of diverse professional, economic and cultural backgrounds, from multiple sites throughout Halton, thereby extending the reach of the Halton District School Board to people of all ages and having significant social and economic impact on our community. The Phase One Report concluded that while the centre, as a separate legal entity, offered non-credit programmes which did not necessarily fit the core mandate of the Halton District School Board, it indeed plays an important role in meeting the pre-, post-secondary educational needs of learners in the Halton region. The project identified and evaluated potential future state options for the centre, and concluded that a hybrid model, one in which there was more coordinated integration between the Halton District School Board and the centre, but with the entities remaining independent and separate, was indeed the most beneficial mo-, sorry, model for learners as well as for the board. The Adult and Continuing Education Hybrid Model is built on a student or client-centred approach to service delivery, and offers the promise of improved pathway planning and integrated service for our learners. As well, it allows for a stronger voice and profile for adult education in Halton, at a time when the province is focused on creating a more integrated and coordinated employment, education and training system. In fact, in pursuing the Adult and Continuing Education Hybrid Model, the Halton District School Board is not only aligned with provincial direction, but is indeed leading the way in effective service delivery integration. Following the trustees' approval of the recommendation of the Adult and Continuing Education Hybrid Model, Phase Two of this project was conducted in August, December of 2014, and was again facilitated by Deloitte consultant Andy Potter. Phase Two of the Adult and Continuing Education Review segmented stakeholders or staff into four project teams: service delivery, administration, facilities, as well as communications and marketing. Recognizing that service delivery drives process, this team focused on current gaps in client intake, assessment and referral processes, with the aim of creating well-defined learner pathways and seamless transitions between programmes and services. The additional teams focused on the necessary infrastructure to support and better align and integrate service delivery between Gary Allen High School as well as the centre. The Adult and Continuing Education Review Phase One and Two launched the project teams into operationalising their objectives, and throughout the last many months, Gary Allen High School and the centre have been working together to create more seamless and effective pathways for our many clients and students. Some of the specific activities of the service delivery team has been to map out the client experience and to develop a common assessment process to ensure our adult learners have access to the programmes and services to best meet their individualized needs. A common assessment tool is currently being piloted across several Gary Allen High School and centre sites, and this team will reconvene in April to share the strengths and the attributes of this process. It is anticipated this coordinated intake, assessment and referral process will scale up to include all Gary Allen High School and centre programme sites for the upcoming school year. Programme leaders and site managers across both organisations have also been meeting regularly to continue to develop a deeper understanding of programmes and services available across each organisation, and these partnerships are now well-established and moving forward richer conversations regarding additional programme integration and development plans. In addition, the administrative team has undertaken a financial review to inform and highlight some of the potential cost-sharing benefits between Gary Allen and the centre, and the work of the joint marketing and communications team has included a number of exciting initiatives. The launch of a new Gary Allen High School website in August 2015, and enhancements to the centre website now provides effective and easy access to available programmes and services within and across each organisation to best support the needs of our adult learners. Shared marketing tools and resources have begun to be developed and distributed across the region, and the development of a comprehensive marketing plan, which identifies key cross-marketing opportunities and projects to indeed, again, enhance access and awareness of adult learner programmes, is currently being co-developed. Perhaps one of the most exciting initiatives in the last seven months has been the co-location of the centre's employment services and the Gary Allen High School Adult Education Programme, in which we have moved our Oakville Self-Reliant Learning Programme from classroom space located on the White Oaks South Campus to a professional setting on Morden Street. This action has facilitated a rich opportunity to provide an integrated and effective service delivery model, in which adult members of our community can now seek education, training, job readiness skills and employment services and support as they navigate through complex and often challenging life choices and pathway plans. The video shared with you as part of this presentation was recently prepared and presented at provincial conference, and effectively highlights a significant and powerful initiative. In April 2014, the Ministry of Education released a report, Achieving Excellence: A Renewed Vision for Education in Ontario, that stated children and students of all ages will achieve high levels of academic performance, acquire valuable skills and demonstrate good Adult education is now being recognised as an important player in the overall economic health of communities, as, as is the role of school boards as a player in adult education. Premier Winn referenced adult education in her 2014 mandate letters to ministers, writing to Liz Sandals, Minister of Education. Working with the Ministers of Training Colleges and Universities and of Citizenship, Immigration and International Trade, ensured the adult education system better supports adult learners in their efforts to finish high school and successfully transition to post-secondary education, training or the workplace. Additionally, the introduction of the Adult Education Strategy by the Minister, Ministry of Education has continued to highlight the need and value of school board collaboration and regional school board partnerships to most effectively meet the needs of adult learners requiring access to a wide range of services and supports. Together, Gary Allen High School and the centre provide employment, education and training services and programmes to over 25,000 individuals each year. Through these programmes, Halton District School Board plays a significant role in the social and economic health of its communities, and we are indeed at the forefront of provincial action intended to better address and support the needs of the many adult learners through our service delivery integration initiatives. Going forward, we look forward to continue to further enhance the integration and coordination of services between Gary Allen High School and the centre, as well as the addition of other community partners to drive even greater opportunities of success for our many adult learners across the Halton region. Thank you for the opportunity of presenting to you this evening.
Thank you very much for a great presentation and bringing us up to date on where, and the good things that are happening. Comments and questions for our presenters tonight? Trustee Gerbence.
Through you Chair Amos. Thank you very much for the presentation. It really helped me understand the integration that goes on and then sort of this, the net that we're using to help people, all adults move forward and, and get their high school education and beyond. I was wondering, because the video is, is included in the presentation, will this presentation be available to the public? Because I'm, I'm sure that they would be interested to see, seeing the whole presentation, including the video, which we didn't actually show, so.
Right. We can certainly make it available, absolutely.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you through the chair. I just wanted to thank you for your efforts in, in moving the hybridisation strategy forward. Certainly warms my heart. We're all eternal learners, and this strategy, you know, equips our community with their, for their needs. So it builds strong community and it just warms my heart.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Oh, there's one slipped in. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a question about the move to the Morden site. Have you noticed that you're getting feedback that it is easier to access because it's not on a high school site? The reason why I ask is that the people who have interrupted their learning and/or have decided they need more learning, or gee, now maybe I want to take math and science and they didn't, and, and don't want to return to the high school environment, even if it is, you know, the bustling metropolis of Waus. The, sorry, White Oaks Secondary with the 2,400-plus, not exactly like a, a little elementary school you're walking into, but, but I'm wondering whether the professional environment is, is helping, and if you have any comments on that.
Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate actually the question and comment. Yeah, I think you've captured it very, very well, in terms of the feeling of adult learners in entering a high school setting, where for many of them, they have been unsuccessful learners in high school, and high school wasn't that great an experience. So to come cap in hand at 38 or 45 years of age into the back of a high school, to enter a high school classroom setting, is a challenge. And that was kind of some underlying premise that we had, not only in integrated service delivery, but how we can best serve our adult learners. We have seen, as we looked at some of our enrollment data early in the years, we moved in the early induration, about a 70% increase in the uptake of credit courses in our adult education programme in our local location, which we continue to monitor now as we move it to the end of our March count dates. So that has been wonderful in terms of seeing that emergence and growth within that student populace, which suggests that there's increased engagement. We also endeavour around this time of year to survey all of our adult learners across all sites within Gary Allen, to look at the things that are working really well and the things that they appreciate and, and enjoy within our programmes, and also areas that we can improve on. So I'm hoping at that time to ascertain some additional qualitative data, to be able to speak to the experiences of those individuals on those campuses.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, at some point, maybe it would be useful, I know the trustees have toured the centre, but maybe that new location might be a, a good tour.
Thank you, we appreciate that. And we also had a wonderful open house in February, in which we had a number of, a number of trustees that had attended, as well as many community partners. It was a lovely event, and you'd be welcome at any time to visit any site, be it rather Gary Allen or the centre, or certainly the integrated facility on Morden as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
My question surrounds the next steps for students graduating from such programmes, is because I know that there are colleges in and around there, and my bias is I work for Sheridan College, so I look out my window and I see that they're developing a, a new building of skilled trades, specific. So I was wondering if, is there a, a clear pathway for them to graduate from these programmes and gain acceptance into post-secondary programmes in similar fields? Is that a while they don't?
Absolutely. In terms of pathway planning, we honour all pathways, and just as a point of awareness, about half of our adult learners have already graduated from, from high school. And so for many of those students, it's looking at upgrading their workplace skills or workplace readiness, sometimes also looking at additional prerequisites if they're looking at retraining in a college or university and changing pathway plans. So we certainly have, certainly have that breadth of students that reach both university, college, dependent on, again, profile and background, and there's such complexity in the adult, the adult student populace, as well as workplace pre-apprenticeship transitions, et cetera.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Director Miller.
Thank you Chair Amos. Dale has already put up the video on the website on the board meetings agenda, so it's up there already now.
It'll go live in about 45 minutes, the whole presentation.
Whole presentation, so. So it doesn't preclude Tara, Associate Director Bowe putting it in other locations on our website, but it's already up, so, thanks for that.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for coming tonight, and appreciate the presentation and bringing us up to date on the status of the, the amalgamation for our adult and other learners. So thank you very much for coming in tonight, Tara, we appreciate it. And thank you very much, Associate Director Bowe. The next item is the Budget Schedule Update. Superintendent Beerman, report 16048 on page 20 of your board package. Superintendent Beerman.
Thank you through the chair. At the January meeting, we provided a schedule to outline what will be the process for the 2016-17 budget development. This just provides a little bit more information with respect to some of the dates. We were advised by the ministry that they will be announcing the GSN, the Grants for Student Needs, tomorrow. Not sure what and how much detail will be available. Typically, it provides an overview of the funding for the coming year, with subsequent details outlined in the technical paper, usually comes within the next week or so. So the ministry did indicate that information will be available on their website tomorrow, so we'll wait with, with bated breath for, for those announcements. Also, on the second page of the report, it did provide, or have provided, some information with our stakeholder input. So we have provided an opportunity for all individuals to provide comments via the board website. This has been the process that has been followed in prior years and has been quite successful in terms of soliciting input from various stakeholders. I've identified where the information has been posted, including emails sent to all schools, community groups, and it has been posted in the local newspapers. And on the subsequent pages, I've identified the budget workshop dates and some of the topics that we'll be reviewing with each of those workshops. So at this point, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Superintendent Beerman on the timelines or the budget development schedule? Trustee Elle Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will endeavour to be speedy. So.
Do you only have three minutes?
I know. Speedier than that. When I hear people talk about the budgeting process and the way monies are allocated, I think that it's a complicated system, that, you know, we have certain buckets of money that can only be used for certain purposes, whereas I don't think that's a very commonly known fact, what gets used for what. So I wonder if there's a, a resource out there that we could also direct people to, including myself sometimes, to kind of brush up on what can be used for what kind of thing, and if it doesn't exist, if there's a way to efficiently, you know, make that, thanks.
Thank you through the chair. To Trustee Elle Harrison, there are a number of information documents that can provide that detail. Certainly on the ministry website, in addition to some of the more technical documents, they do have a parent's guide, which does summarise the funding model in, in layman terms, so to speak, and does identify the various components of the funding model through the various grants. So that is certainly a valuable resource. As part of the budget workshops, we do provide quite a bit of information with respect to funding and the specific areas that can be used for various programmes or programme delivery within the board. So those presentations are also posted on the board website, and I know that there have been many questions coming out of those presentations. So those would be two, I think, resources that, that would be beneficial to, to the trustees and to, to the public that are looking for that information. With respect to various constraints the ministry puts on the funding, there's really three or four areas that boards must comply. One is with respect to special education, where the dollars that are spent for special, special education must be spent on special education. The next would be school renewal. Again, similar stipulation, that dollars received for school renewal must be spent on school renewal. There is the average class, class size compliance for both elementary and second. for both elementary and secondary. Other than that, the board does have flexibility, or boards do have flexibility to realign based on, on multi-year plan and based on board needs. And certainly when we do present budget information, we do identify those specifics. So hopefully that provides, you know, different avenues that would be available to the public for, for those details.
Follow up quickly.
Yes, you can.
So I wonder if there's any merit. Thank you. That was very helpful. I wonder if there's any merit in providing a link to that ministry layman's terms document to, because I did direct a number of people to the commenting page and I, I don't, is it there already? Okay, yes.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this topic tonight? Seeing none, we'll look forward to the process starting next month. Thank you. So our next item is the capital update. Superintendent Cullen, report 16052 on page 20 of your board package.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like to draw trustees' attention to a few items on this evening's list, and then I'll take any questions on other projects. The Martin Street project, we've reached the point where the abatement is complete. We have done the preservation of the heritage component, i.e. the front wall of the building, and demolition has now begun on the older part of the building. The Alton Village project, you know more about than our staff do. You've just approved the award of tender, so that's good news. We'll get that started right away. And the Craig Kilburger addition went back for a redesign to avoid the impact on the portables or reduce the impact on the portables. And I believe that was already shared. So those are sort of three key items in the capital project world as we speak. Happy to take any questions related to those or any other items related to these. Thank you.
Thank you. So comments or questions on our capital projects update? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to speak through you to Superintendent Cullen. We may need to increase the security at the Martin Street site. A certain counselor that you and I are extremely familiar with seems to have jumped the fence and began posting photos of the demolition.
Thank you for that information. I would take great pleasure in dealing with that.
He put it out for information, but I was just like, it does look like he's jumped the fence. So we might want to be careful.
Thank you, Trustee Daniele. Trustee Collard.
This isn't about capital updates, but I wanted to publicly thank the facilities department and specifically Superintendent Cullen for fixing the leaky roof at Mohawk Gardens over March break. They had a flood in their library and in their gymnasium and they were very greatly concerned about returning after March break, what it might be like. And they did an excellent job and I'm just very pleased and I wanted to thank the entire department.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to the appropriate staff.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions regarding capital updates tonight? Seeing none, our next item is the administrative procedure update. Director Miller, report 16049 on page 22 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. You've got them all before you. They're all date changes except the first one around distribution of materials. And this is about, quite often we get solicited by organizations to distribute their materials for them, non-government organizations, et cetera. And per the ED Act and the anti spam, we've had to develop an admin procedure on the distribution of these materials. And it's, it's, it's intent is to safeguard what we put out and have some control over what goes out. So notwithstanding, sometimes they just approach the schools and the schools put out stuff. We're working on that, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions on the administrative procedure review update? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yeah, regarding the distribution of materials, minimum of 15 business days is three weeks. Was there some reason why it was that long? And it says a minimum through three weeks. Can the, can a principal for a particular school, for a particular thing waive that if necessarily, I mean, we're talking electronic. I mean, I'm not talking about the ones where they're waiting to get the, to proof the whatever, but, and I'm thinking of situations like the, sometimes the scout groups or the girl guide groups, you know, want to send out a flyer to a particular school neighborhood in September. And if they had three business weeks, they might miss registration and yet they wouldn't have the thing ready until the first day of school. And I'm just wondering about that kind of stuff.
Through Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. The 15 days is what other boards are doing, but I would, I would expect the principal to be prudent around that if there was a time limitation on that, so.
So is there a way to perhaps have the administrative procedure have a little wiggle room in it? Because when one uses words like minimum of 15 days, at least in the school one, whether or not there's a way to put a, at the discretion or something, just, just so that the principals realize they are allowed to do it faster if they want to?
Through you, Chair Amos to Trustee Harvey Hope. We can look at that. I'm, I'm not particularly concerned about it because knowing principals as principals are, if it needs to be out there and they want to get it out there, they'll get it out there. Or, so, but certainly we can take a look at that wording. The intent behind that really is to safeguard as opposed to the example you've given, but your example makes complete sense. So let us have another wee look at it and see if we can figure out a way to do that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. My question, I guess, is also on the same administrative procedure. And it's not so much the distribution of materials to the greater community, but often I receive requests from nonprofit organizations to distribute materials to principals, teachers, and so on. And I know that that's not addressed in this admin procedure. And maybe that's, this isn't the place for it, but I just thought I would put it out there that some, some of them are really great. Some of them offer free programs. Some of them offer excellent programs for a nominal fee. And just to have a, some direction on what to do with those, I think would be great for me personally, even if it's outside of this administrative procedure.
Through Chair Amos to Vice Chair Graves, are you talking about people going to trustees and then asking trustees to go to principals? Didn't think about it that way. Ultimately, the distribution of anything coming out of a school is the principal's responsibility. I don't, I don't see any harm with, if you see an opportunity that might be valuable for a school or a principal might want to look at, I don't see any harm in trustees approaching principals and providing them that information. Ultimately, it's the principal's decision for all the reasons that it should be. But I, I, I'm looking at my colleagues around the room, but I personally don't see any harm in doing that. We don't have a procedure around that. But I think we could almost treat it the same way as I get these requests too, and I farm them out to the principals and then leave it with them. So I don't think there's an issue with that.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair to the director. One of the questions I have is, is there a reason why profit organizations are not, are excluded from this admin procedure? And I'm only thinking in terms of our recently passed community partnerships policy, which really offers opportunities with the nonprofit and profit sector. And I'm just wondering whether, you know, what the, what the consideration is, just so that I can, I can understand it.
Through you, Chair Amos to Trustee Reynolds. It's to avoid the grayness. Some for-profit organizations will work in conjunction with nonprofit and that makes it a little difficult. When it is strictly a profit organization, you can see the ethical and moral issues with principals distributing materials that make a profit for an outside agent, an outside body, particularly if it's a corporation or something along those lines. Like, you know, in an extreme example, a corporation that's a clothing or something, having, requesting a principal send it out in high schools and then they make a profit. I mean, that's the extreme example and that doesn't happen per se, but, you know, they would go through fundraising procedures. But it's, it's, it's excluded to prevent principals having to make that call, I guess is the best way to describe it. We're trying to make it clean for them so that they understand that it is for nonprofit organizations. However, as I said right at the beginning, there are some gray areas there where nonprofits work in partnership with profits, profit, profit-making organizations, and the profit-making organization is making no profit about what they're distributing. I think that's still fair game to go to a principal. It's about, it's about, the intent is to prevent organizations using our students who are to make, to make their profits in a way that has them kind of captured, so to speak.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate that because I think the, the, the fact that we have a very good disclaimer that we could use to attach could be a way in which we could, I want to say accommodate. I, I mean, I don't know what the ideas are or the needs are in the future, but I think we have the mechanism to protect ourselves. And I would, I would just like to be open to possibilities. We don't know what our, what.
Thank you. Trustee Gervens.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Trustee Reynolds already knows that I don't actually agree with her on this. I, I really don't feel that our, our distribution system should become like the Thursday night flyers in the Post, you know, where we're just inundated all the time. As a parent, I don't want to be inundated all the time with, with crap. So that's, that's just how I feel.
I, I would say this through your trustee, Chair Amos to Trustee Gervens. I would, I would suggest that the vast majority of our administrators are pretty discerning and prudent in, in what they allow to go out or not. They are, inundated might be too strong a word, but they get a flood of materials and people wanting them to distribute them. And sometimes some things that are out there accidentally, but by and large, I think our principals understand this principle, so to speak, right? So, and, and, you know, I'm just thinking back to what Vice Chair Graves had asked me about when trustees get them and you, I don't see there's any harm in giving to the principals, but you'd have to make, ensure that you're not necessarily endorsing it as well, because that might put the principal in a difficult circumstance. So just a bit of a caveat, I guess, attached to that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this administrative procedure review update? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Our next item is the board report schedule update. Director Miller, report 16050 on page 23 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. At this point, there are no changes that I can think of or that we've discussed. There may be one or two down the road, but at this point, it is as it is, so.
Thank you. Comments or questions for the director on this tonight? Trustee Collard.
Thank you. About a month ago, Director Miller made a comment regarding a report to come to trustees about an administrative procedure regarding the location and relocation of special education placements. And I note that that is still not on the upcoming reports list. And the other thing I noted is that there are a few updates that need to be made. Park policy posting says to PB and G. Operational plan student initiative says delayed. I think the, the items in the list need to be reviewed and updated because many of these things have actually been completed and they don't have the notation of completed beside them. So just for the sake of tidiness, I think it would be good to make sure that it's up to date.
Through your Chair Amos to Trustee Collard. Thank you for that. We will do that. Yeah, that, I have spoken with Superintendent Zahnfeld about that other report and I, off the top of my head, I can't remember the date, but we'll get it in there.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this topic tonight? Seeing none, we're now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Vice Chair Graves.
I'll just lead with the committee of the whole summary and invite the respective program chairs, committee chairs to, to jump in with individual reports. I'll do a general overview. So the last committee of the whole meeting, we discussed the long-term accommodation plan. We saw some excellent progress on our upcoming recognition program awards. And we discussed the facilities enhancement's policy, which we saw today. In our upcoming meeting, we'll be discussing the communications audit. We'll continue our work on the bylaws section regarding committees. We will discuss the trustee code of conduct and some finance and accountability priorities. We'll also have a private session on the director's performance review. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, this morning, we had our equity committee meeting and it was very well attended. We had discussions around the table about the different initiatives being done throughout Halton from our community agencies as well as within the board. And it was a very productive meeting.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a heads up that the next audit committee meeting is Tuesday, April the 12th. For those of you on the audit committee, please get back your homework to me and anybody else that I've sent the audit committee assessment stuff to. And just a reminder that this is the meeting in April, which is usually the internal audit reports and the plans. So all trustees are welcome to attend. So I'm just giving you a heads up. I know that is the day after we go for many days and multi-plan workshop and after the Central West and after the Summit of Mental Health. And, you know, who knows what shape I'll be in by that day number seven of full days of work, but it's a, it's a good meeting to attend. So thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. On behalf of Trustee L. Harrison, my co-chair and partner in crime for the, for communications, we, we had an opportunity to share the Inspire Awards components, poster, our nomination form, nomination information pieces. And I thank the trustees for providing feedback on that. The bulk of our discussion was the, where trustees are, were engaged in a discussion on the evaluation matrix. And again, thank you to all who provided their feedback and we hope to have an update at, at our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Gervens.
Thank you. Yesterday, I attended the mental health steering committee meeting and we discussed a number of things, including the upcoming plans for the Children's Mental Health Week, which is also going to be paired with a staff mental health week. And there is a discussion of potential activities and things that will be going on for both staff, staff and students during that week.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you very much. Yesterday, or another day this week, Trustee Papin, Chair Amos and myself attended the, a session to draft the vision, mission, and values of the multi-year plan. It's my understanding that it's coming well, by the way, and based on all of the great input from the many stakeholders we've had involved to date. and based on all of the great input from the many stakeholders we've had involved to date. So it's my understanding that will be shared with trustees in the very near future. So you can take a look as well.
That will be coming to trustees prior to our two-day session. Vice Chair Graves.
The Program Viability Committee met twice in March. Preliminary review, I will say, of some of the feedback from the public consultations. And I say preliminary because there's a lot of data and there's a lot of ways of slicing and dicing the data. So much of the discussion has been, what other ways would you like to see this information? But we have started to receive the feedback from the surveys from parents, staff, and students. And when that is, I think, the plan, I don't want to put any words into it. But when, when there's a better idea of what data would be relevant for us, then at that time, I'm sure it will go further than the committee. But it's been some great discussions so far.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none. Our next item is the Director's Report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. And the first item I was going to report on was the multi-year plan, but it was being preempted by trustee Al Harrison and trustee Amos. So, but I would reiterate what they've said. It's been very good and you will get a copy of what the drafty that we've come up with prior to the April 10th and 11th, which are our two full days around developing the multi-year plan. But I've got a bunch of other stuff here tonight. On April the 7th is the music showcase in Hamilton Place. Begins at 7:30. I don't know, many of you have been there before. It's a fantastic event. It's a big, big event. But prior to the 7th, on April 5th, we have another huge event. It's good that we put this all in the same week. The Halton Skills Competition, which is the 27th Annual Skills Competition at Robert Bateman. It will involve 1,200 elementary and secondary students, grade four right up to grade 12. And the information is on the board website. And if you have not been able to go to a skills competition in the past, I would strongly urge that you go to it, even if you could spend a half an hour there because they are fantastic, seeing these kids build robots and racing and stuff. It's amazing. March 29th and 30th, we have Band Extravaganza. That's 900 grade seven and eight students. And it's held at the Burlington Music Center and the Burlington Senior Center. Whoa, poor seniors with all those kids with the Band Extravaganza.
It's good music.
I know. But I'll wake a few of them up. The last thing I, the last two things I have is, White Oaks' debating team was at Oxford for a pretty prestigious debating competition. And they did well. They didn't do as well as they'd hoped, but they did really well. And they were competing against some of the best debating schools in Europe and in the U.S. and a few in Canada. So well done to them. And the last thing I have to say is I hope you all have a very happy Easter.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for the director on his report tonight? Seeing none, we're up to the communications from the chair. I really don't have anything other than to say that the team from White Oaks was one of the top three teams in Canada when they went to compete. So that alone is pretty prestigious. And the fact that they were competing against such high quality from across the world. I mean, that's kudos to them, that the fact, I mean, I've met these young ladies and the younger one can, I would hate to be her parent because she can talk her way around everything. It's amazing. If you didn't see it, the star interviewer interviewed both of them. And the question they asked was, why should Donald Trump be president? You should hear them. So they had to argue for. So just if you want to, I can send you the links because it's really amazing. So.
Just a funny quirky story about one of the debaters. She was, her father was asked, you know, how do you negotiate with your daughter? And he says, well, we negotiate for a while. He says, but I usually default to say, I'm your father. Just go do it.
The next is trustee questions and comments. Do we have any trustee questions or comments tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a heads up that this is robotics season. I don't have a child on the team anymore, so I'm a little rusty on what's going on. But I do know that there's a bunch of things going on in North Bay and Windsor and the new Oakville team. Community team is out off and running and the other teams, Halton teams are busy doing stuff. And I'm sure most of them spent most of their March break with their little bolts and drivers and everything else. So that's the robotics update for the year. And also, my question is to the director. I know we've got these two full days and because one of them is Sunday and Monday, which is not our usual days, I'm just curious if we could have, not necessarily right now, but as soon as possible, the timing of those because I am trying to, because we are busy with the Summit for Mental Health, the 7th, the 8th, the Central West on the 9th, the Multi-Plan 10-11, the Audit Committee on the 12th, Budget Meeting on the 13th. I'm wondering if I'm going to be home for dinner at all in that weekend, so I'm just trying to figure out the timing. Thanks.
Do you want me to respond? The plan is for nine to five both those days.
Trustee Gervens.
So it was suggested that this topic be brought up at this point in our meeting. As you know, we have been contacted recently by Burlington parents who would like to have our Elite Athletic, Elite Athlete Program, which resides at WI Dick Middle School in Milton, expanded to include a program at a school in South Halton. The program has a modified schedule for students who compete at the provincial or national level who require extensive training that cuts into their regular school day. The program is for students in grade five through eight. It currently has 50 students and requires two teachers and two classrooms. There are established admission criteria as well as an application process already in place. We had a small presentation from former superintendent Yao Bang about the program. And he mentioned that the program cost is minimal and that there is no transportation provided to or from the program. I attended an information night at WI Dick and conducted an informal survey of interested parents while I was there. Some parents had students at various schools within our board, but many parents had students attending private schools and schools in other boards. I think that this board should seriously consider expanding this program for a number of reasons, and I have five of them. First, these children are currently missing classes to pursue their dreams. And let's give them the best situation we can to help them achieve in school, achieve their dreams, and reduce their stress. The time and energy has already gone into creating a successful program at WI Dick, so we would just be expanding it to another school. We have schools in Burlington that need a 50-student boost in their numbers. Last year's LTAP shows three potential K-8 school sites for this program in the city. And I can just, like, front neck, Brant Hills and McMillan look like they might be candidates for something like this, just looking at their numbers. I don't think that this is a cost-neutral program. I think that this is actually a revenue-positive program because it would attract students back from the private system. And our provincial funding is based on enrollment. We see the French and other boards trying to attract students to their systems because it increases their funding and keeps their schools open. We need to have incentives to attract new students or at least keep the ones we have, which leads me to my final point. We know that the Halton Catholic District School Board is looking at closing some schools in Burlington. If we don't provide a program like this, parents of these athletes will be pushing our coterminous board to provide it for them. This may mean a loss of students and in turn, funding from our board. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that there's some exciting initiatives happening in Burlington. They're under the Healthy Kids Community Challenge, which is, I'm finding that there are schools in our communities that are participating in the challenge. There, we have Central Public School that held a Free Family Skate over March break and attended by over 65 people. And we have three schools working right now collaboratively in Aldershot who are looking to do a family biking activity. And this will be supported with a grant from the Healthy Kids. Oh, and finally, sorry, Aldershot High School is doing a Robert Munch production. And the public is invited to attend the performance Saturday, April 16th at 10:00 a.m. Tickets can be bought via Halton Learning Foundation website. And those families who have little ones going could be going during the week via their elementary school. There are a large number of elementary schools who are going to attend the production. So those who aren't can go on the Saturday with their families.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, as I drove back from Waterloo, I listened to David Suzuki on the radio. He's turning 80, which I was shocked at. So on that occasion, they are producing A Special Nature of Things and this interview took place. One of the things that he said that I found really interesting was that, well, I knew this part, that we live in an era of information. But what he said was, you can find information to substantiate basically any view. And what he took from this was that people no longer have to challenge themselves to consider the other view because they have so much information to support their opinions. And it seems to me that we have so many challenging things coming up in our near future. PVC, LTAP, budget, elite programs, Wi-Fi, which I see springing up in newspapers, again, where there's scientific evidence on both sides. I'm not a scientist or an expert on any of these topics. But the skill that I do think we bring to the table is that we're facilitators and listeners. So I look forward to having a good conversation about all of these conversations or all of these topics, hearing what our communities have to say, and hopefully being able to come up with good solutions. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we're going to have some great discussions during our multi-year planning. Is there any other trustee comments or questions tonight? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to leave. Trustee Harvey Hope, seconded by trustee Collard. All those, just a minute. Next, next, all those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much and enjoy your long weekend.